Good evening, folks. This Tuesday, September the 7th, 2013, meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners is now called to order and we'll have our invocation. Join us, please, in prayer. Merciful Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to come in your presence and make our petitions known. We have several issues before us and there are quite a variety of them. It will mean a lot of thought and a lot of wisdom in a lot of different areas. A proficiency in which we confess now, as you're the source of all wisdom, we humbly ask that you impart whatever wisdom we need to make good decisions. Hope these decisions be motivated by a desire to serve you and honor you and serve those that you love. And we ask this in your precious name. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people of which we serve, one nation, united in heaven.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to this agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, there are no adjustments.
Okay. Are there any, does any member of the board have any adjustments they'd like to make to this agenda? Hearing none, a floor is open for adoption of this agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this agenda from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to appointments before the board. Representatives from the Davidson Scenic Byway Project will speak in regards to request for a resolution in support of adding a roadway segment in Mecklenburg and Iredale Counties to the North Carolina Department of Transportation scenic byway program. Mr. Alexander, welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Roy Alexander. I am representing the Davidson Lands Conservancy, a small nonprofit in Davidson, to ask your endorsement for what I believe is the first scenic byway in either Mecklenburg or Iredale County, and it does straddle that boundary, focused mainly on Davidson, that small college town on your southern border, and I'm very much interested in your support for this proposal, which has been endorsed by the staff in the form of your, the former planning director, Mr. Raskowski. This is the, scenic byway will tell the story of a scenic and vibrant town that is, was sparked by the creation of Davidson College way back in 1837. It's rooted in the rural Piedmont landscape also, in addition to the town. It's a six-mile scenic route and a very small piece right up here at the beginning is just north of the Mecklenburg border in Iredale County where that Granville marker that you saw earlier is located, and then a small portion over here where Gray Road comes out and becomes Greystone Road for about 500 yards, touches on to Shearer Road, and proceeds south into Mecklenburg again. So those two small segments there are the Iredale portion of this particular route as it's proposed. As we say, it celebrates the history, the recreational potential, and the rural beauty of this part of our counties, starting at that marker that designates a King's Grant that was made back in the fall of 1746, and travels down Main Street of Davidson, which doesn't look like this today. It goes past several historic residences in the, on the main street there, the first cemetery in Davidson, many historic buildings on the college campus dating back as far as 1836, and then right there on Main Street is the old Helper Hotel, which was dated back to 1848. The college campus itself is an arboretum and will be of great interest, I think, to passersby. The town is listed on the National Registration Register of Historic Places for its main street. It's a very vital community that emphasizes such things as local food, public art, regional music, that we find many, we think many visitors to the community will enjoy, and then going out of town, proceeding out Concord Road, up Gray Road, into a very scenic rural landscape that exists there where it overlaps both Mecklenburg and Iredale. All this area is settled by many Presbyterians back in the day who founded Davidson College. They preserve this scenic beauty through comprehensive planning that we in the Land Conservancy like to celebrate, what a model it is for protection of open space and scenic beauty in natural areas. It does stretch across the two counties, as I mentioned, and ends up in an area where we have conserved almost 500 acres of public open space. So we think it will be a very scenic drive. It's six miles, it's certainly not the longest. Some of them are as short, though, as three miles, and others are as long as 143, but this one is more in the typical range as far as length. So we would ask your endorsement of this proposal to designate the route shown as the college town ride and a scenic byway for Iredale County.
Any questions, Mr. Alexander?
Does this designation impose any restrictions or limitations on the county or along the property owners along the byway?
To qualify, you must not allow or have any billboards on the property. If you were to allow one, and one were to, in fact, be placed on, along the route, it would simply lose its designation. It would not even prohibit that landowner putting a billboard up. I understand under your ordinances and such, it's virtually impossible, or at least very difficult, to get billboards in this part anyway, if anybody wanted to do one, but that's the only restriction that comes with it, is there cannot be any scenic, any billboards of any sort.
Okay, any other questions? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we support the resolution supporting the Davidson Scenic Byway Project.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Robertson for approval of this resolution. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Alexander, I have a signed copy of this resolution if you'd like to take it with you.
I would appreciate that.
I'll meet you at the gate over here. Next, we have a request from Iredale Rescue Squad to draw down capital funds. Mr. Niblock, I believe I saw you here earlier. Mr. Brian Niblock will make this request.
There was no requested budget amendment for this item. Would that be required?
I think that actually would be required, and if you, if you take action tonight, and no, you said it's not, I stand corrected.
Okay. Mr. Niblock.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, Commissioners. Brian Niblock, Chief of the Iredale County Rescue Squad. I'll try to make this brief, because it looks like you have a fairly substantial agenda. Request for funds is for a truck project that we have that we're looking into doing. The capital funds were started approximately four years ago for such purchases. The money is already set aside, it's just you have to make a formal request for those funds. The truck we have in mind will be a light to medium duty rescue truck, but would also serve in terms of running first responder calls in the district. This would augment the usage on our east and west substations. The current truck we're using for that program is the newest in the fleet. It's a 2008. However, at the rate we're going, we will expend the life of the truck before we pay it off. So in my mind, in business terms, that's not a good process to do. This truck, incidentally, Mr. Johnson's familiar with its course record, has given us some mechanical issues the entire time we've had it, and we see this as a way of also offsetting the usage of that, kind of softening the blow. The truck we're looking to do would be a pickup style truck. The funds that we would request would handle the purchase of the truck, and then the augment and then upfitting of the truck, and then supplying it with equipment. And using these funds, we also will not incur any further debt, and will not have to secure a loan for the truck. So the request would be for $75,000. I believe that's close to what we have in the fund minus a few hundred dollars. Ms. Blumstein may be able to narrow that down a little closer, but it would take care of the program entirely without having to ask for any further funding for this project. I'll be glad to answer any further questions.
Any questions, Mr. Niblock?
How much, you know, how much is in the fund?
I think it's 75 and a few hundred dollars.
How many miles are on your current truck?
We're in the 60,000 range already.
I apologize, I've been out of town and didn't check it when I got back this evening, but if I'm not mistaken, it's like right at 75,480 dollars, and what I've done is I've carried that money over from year to year, and that's why a budget amendment's not required.
Okay. And who typically controls, controls or makes those recommendations? I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not even talking about your need or whether or not you have a need. This is more just how we allocate money, because I mean, there are other, if we're getting ready to drain the fund totally, I mean, are the other, have we assessed that this is the top priority of all the rescue squads and rescue services? This is how we should spend the last of our capital?
Well, it won't drain it for the other ones, this is just for us.
There were specific amounts, there was a, a total sum of money was approved for a couple of years for all the, the rescue squads, so each one had its own specific share.
Okay, so this is specific to his?
This is just for their department that was carried over.
Sorry for the confusion, yes.
And I apologize, I should have included a schedule with his request.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clear it up, this is just for Iredale County Rescue Squad, this is not, doesn't have any bearing on.
I didn't know if that was your capital or the, you know, the county's.
Yeah, several years ago, these folks were having a problem. They would go along pretty good, and then they'd have to make a large capital expenditure, and then that would cripple their current expense for quite some time trying to service that debt, and we set aside some money in the capital project fund to try to not make that such a burden to them. They could draw down that capital fund without it crippling their current expense fund, and then the economy turns south and we quit doing it.
Yeah, I would, Mr. Robertson hit on that. Now, this will pretty much deplete our, so I would say, come budget time, they need to give some consideration to that.
Okay.
But I'll answer any further questions if you have any.
All right, any other questions?
What will be done with the, with the truck that you're having trouble with?
We're still going to use it, and we're still using it currently, it's just we're trying to forecast forward. If we're at this amount of usage now, and we still owe X amount, we're going to outrun how much we owe, and the truck will be obsolete, so we'll still be paying for a truck we're not using. So plus, it'll help offset some of the usage on the east and west substations, because it's basically being used for that project, so it's, that's where a lot of the miles on top of the calls it's running is coming from. Luckily, a lot of the warranty work was done in the initial phases. We're on our third engine, second transmission, if that kind of gives you an idea.
Right.
I won't give the name brand, so.
I think everybody knows. Any other questions? All right, floor is open for a motion.
motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we just need to get up with Ms. Blumstein, or is that just an electronic transfer?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a request from Habitat for Humanity for the donation of materials and other in-kind contributions, such as permit fee waivers for an urgent repair program that'll be presented by Dr. Jeff Porter. Dr. Porter, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate you hearing this request. My name is Jeff Porter, and I'm the Executive Director at Habitat for Humanity, and we've come this evening to request a donation of materials and other in-kind contributions for our urgent repair program, and I do have a slide presentation. This, again, is entitled Urgent Repair 2013, and to define what an urgent repair is, this is a repair that poses an immediate danger to the safety and health of a family, or it is a repair that, if not completed, could cause the homeowner to leave their home and have to go to a nursing home. So to specify the difference between an urgent and a non-urgent repair, the materials we're looking for are for urgent repairs, so these would be repairs pertaining to plumbing, ramps, bathrooms for the handicap, structural failures in floors or in roofs, chimney hazards, and electrical hazards. These materials would not be used for carpeting or windows, cosmetic repairs or gutters, or anything that does not threaten the safety and well-being of anyone or of everyone in that home. For example, here's a current homeowner who is homebound because she cannot get out of her home, she needs a handicap ramp. She literally is a prisoner in her own home, so the plans would be to build a handicap ramp. Here's what we want to do. Habitat has received $50,500 for urgent repairs from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Now, in order for us to spend that money, we must match this amount by using donated labor, in-kind gifts, and money. That's why we're coming to you, for materials only, and we must complete 20 projects in this service area, which is just within the boundaries of Iredale County. We will not venture out beyond Stateville or Iredale County or to any other county. So I've placed in bold, what we're looking for are in-kind materials for these projects. So going back to this handicap ramp, materials needed for a walkway, we would specifically come to you for every project and say, here's our material list, the wood that we need, the deck boards that we need, the size nails. Every project of these 20 projects would come with a specific material request. If you can meet that request, any and all of it, none of it, that's something that could be decided at that time. We just need permission to, to access or have contributed those materials. Here's another project. This is a bathroom that a client can no longer use because they cannot step over the tub. So what we'll do, we'll go in and we'll remove this tub and place in a handicap accessible bathtub or shower area for this client. Materials, again, would be the unit, the drain, the shower seat. Again, every material list will be enumerated precisely. So who's eligible? Clients will show a proof of income and that they own and occupy the home. Secondly, clients must be either very low income or low income to qualify. Very low would be 30% of median income. Median income is approximately $57,000 in Iredale County. One person at a 30% would be approximately $12,000. At the 50% would be a little over $20,000. They must qualify and show that they've exhausted every other possible resource to have this repaired. They are in desperate need. It must be 62 years, or some other qualifying questions are, are they 62 years or older? Are they disabled? Or is someone in their household disabled? Maybe not the homeowner, but someone residing there. Is it a single-parent household? What is the household size? And are there any children with lead poisoning or, or any sort of significant elevated blood levels, blood lead levels in the home? These are the people we serve. We won't share their names, but every individual has some sort of debilitating condition that inhibits them from fixing their homes, or getting out of their homes, or taking a bath or a shower, or living safely under their own roof. Our job is to help those, but we can't do it by ourselves. In the past, we've done this program, and been very successful. Here's some pictures of past, this is a before picture of an area that needed a handicap ramp. Here's a ramp that we were able to provide using urgent repair monies and volunteer labor. Here's a bathroom that was impossible to access. You see the large tub, as comfortable as that might be, it was an obstacle, an insurmountable obstacle, until we placed in one of our tubs. This is relatively low cost and provides a great benefit for the homeowner. Here's a copy of an urgent repair. Once we got into the job, we found that it was much bigger than we had anticipated, but this is what resulted from this sort of coordinated work. Please consider this request to provide urgent repair. For roofing, it would be shingles, plastic flash, ridge vents, cement, roofing nails. We'll come to you with specific request and a list, that list will be given a retail value that we show to North Carolina Housing Finance to show that we've matched the funds that they've given us.
Any questions, Dr. Porter?
What are the, I don't think Dr. Porter would know this, but what are the permit fees for some of these jobs? Has somebody?
I don't know the, I don't know, does any?
Here that can answer that?
We don't, we don't, we don't deal with, pardon?
Sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Well, I spoke with Lynn Niblock today, and I tried to get some of that information myself, and it's, it's kind of hard to, hard to say.
Do we have a range?
I would say anywhere from, I'd have to guess, I'd have to guess. Our minimum fee is $60 for a permit, and depends on what the project is. The one thing that Lynn did say is that he did not feel that the permit fees would be an extremely high number, or, you know, if, if they were to be part of this request, that wouldn't be a very high number.
I'm not aware of any of these materials that we have that we can donate. I mean, are, do we have these materials?
We, we have some materials that basically we use for our maintenance and facilities and things of that nature. We, we're not going to have a huge inventory on, you know, on hand, no.
Is there some type of legal requirement that prohibits us from donating material that's purchased with tax dollars?
I think you'd have to declare a surplus.
So is it my understanding that maybe the only thing that could be considered is waiving fees?
That would by far be easier, yes.
Which is not a huge amount of money, but I got three bundles of shingles you guys can have at my house. I just had my roof replaced, you can come pick up everything I had left, unopened bundles of shingles. I'll give you my address. I'll help out. I'm not sure there's a lot that we can do from a commissioner's perspective on, on this, other than waive fees. I may be mistaken, but...
In my conversations with Dr. Porter, I tried to convey that, that the fees would, of the two, if you, if you chose to do either, that that would be easiest, that there's a precedent for that.
One thing I thought about, you could look at your inventory, you know, we approve a surplus inventory list every year, Mr. Smith, and we could look over that thing and see if there's anything in that surplus, that you were going to declare surplus that would be of use to these folks, and then when we declare it surplus, we could make some determination what we're going to do with it. And again, though, I agree with everything's been said up to this point, that that won't be a tremendous amount of money. I, I will add that I did talk to the, to the Health Board, and there's a willingness on the Health Board to assist these folks with some of the environmental health fees. And I spoke with David Henson, and they would be willing to do, certainly do that. You understand, right now, I think they're about six weeks behind in the Southern End, and they're gaining on it, but he said if these folks could work with him, where, he could get one of his employees to maybe take a shorter lunch or something one day and work on a layout for them, or something of that nature, he'd, they'd certainly be willing to do that.
Those aren't small-ticket items.
Yeah.
Those are, that's a lot of money.
You could be several hundred dollars. That's a bigger ticket item. I don't know how many septic installations you would have.
Or repairs.
You might have some. And, you know, if somebody had a well problem, we could waive that fee, perhaps.
All right, so you want me to make that a motion?
Yeah, 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 I would, I would support that, and what I'd like to keep in mind is Mr. Henson, I think he sent me a list, and I apologize, Dr. Porter, I meant to get with you prior to this meeting, but it seems like lately my time's not my own, but he has probably half a dozen questions he'd like to go over with you or some member of your staff and iron out before we make a, arrive at a formal agreement, but there's a willingness on the part of the Health Board to participate and try to assist you folks.
Okay. All right, so then I'll make a motion that, for the, the 2013 Urgent Repairs Program only, as it relates to Habitat for Humanity, that we would direct county staff to waive all inspection department fees relative to projects covered under the Urgent Repair Program, and that we would ask the, the Board of Health to do the same.
Okay.
That kind of limits the scope and exposure.
Okay. All right. Any just further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay. At this point, we'll declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for Project Big Mac. And it's going to cost everyone, the name of these projects is not my idea. Welcome, Mr. Carney, always glad to see you.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And just for clarification, the names of these projects don't come from me either. They get matriculated through the process somehow, but...
UFOs, must be.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of Iredell County, I first want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Project Big Mac. It is a recreational development project interested in locating in Iredell County. The intent of this project is to locate one of the most widely recognized and highly decorated competitive swimming organizations in the country to our community. This organization provides youth swimming programs all the way to Olympic athlete training. More Olympic swimming athletes train with this organization than anywhere else in the U.S. This project would entail ten million dollars in new tax investment to Iredell County and bring twenty-five full-time jobs and fifty part-time jobs to the area. The full-time jobs associated with this project bring wages varying between thirty and seventy thousand dollars per year. If this project chooses to locate, the developer, R.L. West, would construct a fifty-one thousand square foot recreational aquatic and event center and twenty-two hundred seat stadium and enter a long, a long-term lease agreement with this aquatic center. Incentives provided to R.L. West would be used to lower the cost of leasing to that aquatic center. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we are requesting incentive be granted to R.L. West in association with developing this aquatic center for eighty percent of increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. This amount would equal thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars per year for five years, totaling one hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. I want to thank you for the consideration of this matter. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Carney? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this? You would come forward and state your name for the record. Okay? If not, we'll declare this public hearing closed and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve a hundred ninety-four thousand dollar incentive over a five-year period based on the company's investment of ten million dollars in contingent upon a contract being executed within a hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Robertson's motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll declare this meeting once again to be in a public hearing, this time in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for Project Metal. Mr. Carney?
Again, thank you for the opportunity to present this project, Project Metal. I'm here to request consideration for Project Metal should they choose to expand their operations in Iredell County. Project Metal is actually structured medical. They are headquartered in Naples, Florida, first located in Iredell County in two thousand and six, and they are a state-of-the-art advanced manufacturing company that provides titanium medical implant products for the medical device industry. They currently own and occupy twenty-four thousand square feet in the Deerfield Business Park and their facility houses over twenty-five CNC machines and they employ forty-one full-time employees. This project would bring a maximum investment of six million in new machinery and equipment over the next three years and allow them to create twenty-five additional full-time jobs. These jobs would pay an average salary of thirty-seven thousand per year plus benefits and this project would be completed in December of two thousand and sixteen. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Incentive Policy, we request consideration on incentive for instruct, for structured medical should they decide to expand their operations. Their investment would be a maximum of six million dollars and a minimum of three million dollars with a maximum incentive payout of twenty-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars per year for five years totaling a hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred dollars and a minimum payout of eleven, eleven thousand six hundred and forty dollars per year for five years totaling fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. Once again, I'm happy to answer any questions we might have in regards to Project Metal.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Carney in regard to this? Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forward, please. If not, we'll declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the incentive ranging between fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars and one hundred and sixteen four hundred dollars for a five-year period based on the company's investment ranging between three million and six million in contingent upon a contract being executed within a hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Motion to approve comes from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion on his motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll, at this time, declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for Project Point. Mr. Carney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to request consideration for incentive assistance for Project Point. Project Point is a new relocation project of Sharp Gallagher Racing. Sharp, Sharp Gallagher Racing operates teams in both NASCAR Truck and Arca Series and is interested in locating in the Mooresville, South Iredell community. The project is interested in purchasing the one-twenty-six Exmoor facility located in the Deerfield Business Park. The project would include purchasing the thirty-one thousand square foot facility and expanding that facility to forty-six thousand square feet. The company would bring twenty-five full-time jobs and hire an additional ten to fifteen new full-time positions, paying average wages of fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars per year. The company plans to invest a total of between five and six million dollars in purchasing the facility, as well as new machinery and equipment investment. These expenditures are estimated to create three point one million in new tax investment to Iredell County. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Incentive Policy, we are requesting that incentive be provided to Sharp Gallagher Racing for eighty percent of increased tax value and paid back over five years should they choose to move forward with this project. Based on a three point one million dollar new tax investment, that incentive equates to twelve thousand twenty-eight dollars per year for five years totaling a maximum incentive of sixty thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions in association with Project Point, another project in which I did not name.
Any questions, Mr. Carney? Is there anyone who, here who wishes to speak in regard to Project Point? If you would, please come forward. If not, we'll declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Before I make the motion, should I declare that I didn't name it either? Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve sixty thousand one hundred and forty dollar incentive over a five-year period based on the company's investment of three point one million dollars in contingent upon a contract being executed within a hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion on his motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for Project Repeat. Mr. Carney?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one I did actually name. This is probably the only one in the group that was the name I gave to it. But you'll see how simple-minded I am.
It's a ridiculous name, I got it.
Would you repeat that, please?
On behalf of the MSI EDC, I'd like to request consideration for NGK Ceramics Plans for their fourteenth expansion to their Mooresville facility. As a manufacturer of ceramic catalytic converters and supplier to the automotive industry, NGK Ceramics has been located in Iredell County since nineteen eighty-eight. Their five hundred and thirty thousand square foot facility is located in the South Iredell Industrial Park and currently they employ five hundred and twenty-one full-time workers with wages paying above county average. NGK is considering a thirty thousand square foot expansion to their raw material processing facility to export product materials to other worldwide plants. This project would create twenty-eight new full-time positions and generate twenty-one point five million in new tax investment. The project would be completed by December of two thousand and fourteen. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we are requesting that incentive be granted to NGK Ceramics for eighty percent of increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. This amount would equal eighty-three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars per year for five years totaling four hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred dollars. I want to thank you for your consideration of this matter and I would also be willing to take any questions in regards to Project Repeat.
Any question, Mr. Carney? They've been a good member of our business community for a number of years. How many times have they actually expanded down there? Several.
They've, yeah, we, we do have a couple of project expansions outside of that fourteen that there was no competitive nature for the projects and so therefore they didn't receive any type of incentives, but this one, we are competing with both China, Japan, and Canada.
It's an impressive operation. If you ever get a chance, you need to go see it. Okay, any questions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to Project Repeat? Not, we'll declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we'll do a clean sweep. Make the motion to approve four hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred dollar incentive over a five-year period based on the company's investment of twenty-one point five million dollars in contingent upon a contract being executed within a hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Mr. Robertson makes a motion for approval. Any discussion on his motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of a possible economic development incentive for Project Starch. Mr. Carney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last, but certainly not least, I'm here to present to you on behalf of Besco, formerly known as Best Sweets, a manufacturer of candy confectionery items and OTC pharmaceutical products. Mooresville and Iredell County has been the home and headquarters of Besco since nineteen eighty-eight. Currently, they employ three hundred and seventy full-time workers with an average salary twenty percent higher than the county wage average. Besco is considering an expansion to existing facilities. If successful, this project would include the purchase and expansion of a new gummy line for growth in the over-the-counter pharmaceutical manufacturing sector. The project would entail twelve point eight five million in new tax investment in machinery and equipment, as well as a thirty thousand square foot expansion to existing facilities. This project would also create fifty-five new full-time positions, paying wages above forty thousand dollars annually. This project would be completed by December of two thousand and fourteen. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we request that incentive be granted for eighty percent of increased tax value paid back for a period of five years based on a maximum investment of twelve point eight five million or a minimum investment of three point one million and adjusted proportionately to the actual tax value. The incentive grant equals a maximum payout of two hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety dollars or a minimum incentive of sixty thousand one hundred and forty dollars over a five-year period of time. Once again, with Project Starch, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Carney? If not, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to Project Starch? If you would, come forward, please. If not, we declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the incentive ranging from between sixty thousand one hundred and forty dollars to two hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety dollars over a five-year period based on the company's investment of three million dollars up to ten million dollars in contingent upon a contract being executed within a hundred and eighty days.
Okay. Mr. Robertson offers a motion to approve this request. Any discussion on his motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Carney.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Good job, Roger.
Yes, sir.
About a hundred and fifty new jobs to the county.
Yep.
Great.
Okay, we'll declare this meeting to be in public hearing in consideration of citizen input regarding the North Carolina Department of Transportation Rural Operating Assistance Program Grant. Mr. Ben Steichlether will make this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here tonight. This is a public hearing for our rope grant as stated in a previous meeting. This is the Rural Operating Assistance Program. It's a formula grant from NC DOT. The money has already been set aside by the state legislature. It will apply to this fiscal year. We're seeking public input and request a motion that will allow us to apply for and accept these funds if the application is submitted.
Any questions, Mr. Steichlether? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this matter? If you would, please come forward. Not, we'll declare this public hearing closed and the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of requests from Joyce Johnson with Pfeiffer One Johnson Limited Partnership, RLLLP, to release zoning in subdivision jurisdictions to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Todd?
Good evening, Board. As stated tonight, we have a request for thirty-eight point oh nine acres to be released to the town of Mooresville zoning and subdivision jurisdiction. They proposed a residential development with single-family patio homes and duplex homes, one hundred and fourteen to be exact. Under the county zoning minimum lot size, you'd be looking at about eighty-two lots for that property. So with the proposed, you're looking at about seven hundred and seventy trips per day and Rocky River capacity currently has about five thousand trips a day and the capacity's at twelve thousand trips. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Todd? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? If you would, come forward and state your name, please.
My name's Dan Brewer with WSP. I represent the surveyor and engineer for the property and I'm just here to answer any technical questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions, this gentleman? Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak?
I do.
Okay, come forward and state your name for the record, please.
I never struck that place because, so this is me for me. I'm Patricia Magnuson and I live beside Pfeiffer Johnson in that big square that's labeled RA on the corner. And I come from Ohio and where I grew up was farmland and it became developed, the city grew out there. And I've seen bad development before and I don't want to live through bad development again. So here's my issues. First of all, have you allowed for a big green space for the people that are going to be there? Or how are you going to protect our land around that property? How are we going to keep the people from coming into our woods and our meadows? Also, you don't see it, but that's a hill. Pfeiffer Johnson's at the top of the hill. Our house is at the top of the hill. Our neighbors are at the top of the hill and then we have runoff all the way down. So when you put in streets and asphalt, I'm going to ask that you make sure your runoff does not come down that hill because now when we get big rain, the water runs off the road and we get eight-inch carryout troughs in the road now. So if you increase the runoff there, we're going to have even more problems and I don't want more erosion down my property. Okay? So how are you going to keep them out? Are you going to build fences on our side? And just a sideline, I'm not going to be able to see the cows anymore, but anyway. When I was little and they did development in my Ohio town, the first thing that went bad was the water table. Those of us who are not part of Mooresville, we're still on septic and we're still on well. And when I was little, they put in hotels and subdivisions and they ruined our water table. And our water table started coming out brown and it smelled and we couldn't bathe in it and we started carting in water to our houses. So I don't know what kind of well and plumbing you're going to put in, but please don't ruin our water table because a lot of those folks down there can't afford to go into the public sewer and the public water. Okay? That's a hookup, that's a costly thing. Okay? Increased traffic. I live on that curve and my driveway comes out on that curve. I'm waiting to be brought... I'm waiting to be broadside now. The traffic there at seven AM and at five PM is going sixty miles per hour, fifty-five. They're coming up there, and they screech to a halt when I'm pulling out. I'm waiting for me either to be killed or my children to be killed. Okay? It's not safe, and they're not going forty-five. At the peak periods of the day, I'm on the corner. The mailbox is across the road. I can't cross the road and get the mail. I waited there fifteen minutes to cross the road and get the mail. They said I could move the mailbox, but I can't move that mailbox safely, because I have no space for the postman to pull over. So I either have to wait to cross the road, or I'm going to have to move my mailbox down toward Pfeiffer's and walk down there in the ice and the snow. The only other major concern is the increased traffic. You say there's not going to be any. I say there will be. You're adding a hundred homes. There's going to be more traffic, and I know I can't stop progress, but if you're going to plan to expand, then you need to plan it well.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in regard to this request?
I'd be glad to answer Ms. Magnuson's questions.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I can show her some of the sketch plans we've done. We have a very thick buffer. Most of the land is actually going to be left undisturbed. This project is targeted towards active adult communities, which is smaller home, ranch-style homes. Our traffic study's been done. Actually, active adult communities have a much less traffic impact than a normal residential subdivision. This project meets the Mooresville Land Use Plan. We can be on Mooresville Utilities, the reason for the annexation. Mooresville has a very stringent stormwater rules. All stormwater would be collected in stormwater detention systems, where no more water that's coming on it now will be released later.
You said Mooresville Utilities. You're referring to that there will not be wells. There's going to be Mooresville City Water.
Water and sewer. The sewer trunk line actually runs down along the side of this property, gravity sewer to the treatment plant.
Looking at this map, it appears that the undeveloped parts of this track will be on the, basically on the north and west side.
On the north side of the property is a creek.
Yeah.
And there'll be a couple hundred-foot buffer along the north side.
Well, I understand there's a pretty significant buffer there, but on the east side of the property, where this lady's property is, there are, by my count, fifteen lots that are going to be directly on the eastern boundary of that track.
That's correct.
And is there any thing that will be done to prevent water runoff in that direction? That seems to be a concern.
The project will be graded where all the runoff is direct to the detention along the north side.
Okay, so the street is going to be gutted in such a way that that far right-hand-side street is basically going to channel all the water down that way?
Yes, sir. The site will be graded where the stormwater will all drain to the public street, and then that will be routed to the stormwater system.
Okay.
When you say adult community or older adult community, are you targeting it to retirees? Or what do you?
Yes, sir. Active adult communities in the fifty-five and older range, and this is the community that is attracted to this type of development. This type of development is maintenance-free all along. Care is taken care of irrigation.
It's not restricted to any age?
No, this will not be restricted.
You think that would be the type of people who'd be interested in buying there?
Yes. And this is also a commercial node on Mooresville Land Use Plan. The residential section would be off of that. The neighborhood business piece will be reserved for later. With it being across the street from the shopping center, it's not a rural development, and that meets the land use plan as being a residential section, but not a rural residential
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Not, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion. I'd just like to make a comment or two. The density of this subdivision is approximately three houses per acre. Lots are smaller than what three houses per acre would be if all the property were developed. Some of it's not being developed. I would prefer that density be kept to two dwelling units per acre. We do have, growth does cause a lot of impacts, and residential growth causes adverse impacts. That being said, this development isn't, won't have nearly as much adverse impact as one on Highway one fifty that I voted against a few weeks ago. Much smaller, much less dense development than that. But I've given a lot of thought to the whole issue of extraterritorial jurisdiction, and a lot of issues have arisen over it, and I have just about reached the conclusion I would like to see the General Assembly do away with ETJs. If you're inside of a municipality, the city or town government has zoning power. If you're outside of it, the county has zoning power, and just do away with this ETJ designation altogether. That's something that's beyond our control. Okay. Any other comments or a motion?
I'll make them all, I guess.
Okay.
I'll, Mr. Chairman, I grant that we release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville for Joyce Johnson with Pfeiffer Johnson Limited Partnership, RLLP.
All right. Mr. Robertson makes a motion for approval. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, A, is a request from the NCDOT via our planning department, Matthew Todd, to abandon the maintenance of State Road twenty-one sixty-one.
State Road twenty-one sixty-one is known as Ferguson Road. You can see it there on the map, highlighted in blue. Connects Cool Springs with White Oak Branch. The state is formally requesting abandonment of the maintenance for this portion, which was actually started by the adjacent property owners on both sides of it. There is no right-of-way for this road. It's just been an assumed right-of-way, ditch-to-ditch, basically. So the dropping the maintenance on this will allow those property owners to basically claim what they've owned to the center line of the existing road.
Out of curiosity, was the state maintaining it even though they didn't have a right-of-way?
As a state road, yeah, they were maintaining it. It is a gravel road, but they were maintaining it.
It was just a cut-through for everybody, wasn't it?
Yeah. The traffic counts from DOT is about thirty vehicles per day. No homes are accessed off of it.
I want to understand, there's farmland on either side, and they'd just like to continue just farming in there.
Correct. I think they recently purchased these tracks and just looking at shutting off access.
Any other questions, Mr. Todd? This is more of a comment, but this is different than any of these other abandonment and maintenance requests we've had. The ones I've seen in the past were either where maybe a road was paved and a curve was straightened out and the old part was abandoned, or an intersection was straightened out, or there was a dead-end section of a road that was surrounded by a property that, you know, people didn't want. I've never seen one where it was an actual through road where you abandoned the whole road, even if it's a, you know, small through road.
Or where there was no deeded right-of-way.
Well, I think that, from what I heard, and this is anecdotal, there are quite a few other roads that were no deeded right-of-way either.
That'd be correct.
But, sir?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So that's not a unique situation. I can see where people that live further up this White Oak Branch road and are going down River Hill Road or wherever may want to use it for a right-of-way, you know. I'd kind of respect the desires of the adjacent property owners.
One of the property owners I spoke to said that it's used quite a bit as a little quick speedway, and they're concerned about how they run the stop sign on both ends and just put that there.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the request from NCDOT to abandon the maintenance on State Road twenty-one sixty-one, Ferguson Road.
Okay. Motion's made to grant this request by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Item B is a request from Iredell Statesville Schools for approval of a water line easement at Woodland Heights Elementary, and Dr. Kenny Miller will make that request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. We had a request from Crescent Land Resources for a water easement across our, I guess it would be the southern border of our property to the property that's being developed on Forest Lake Boulevard. Our board has approved that easement. It does not affect any of our property. As far as our ball fields or any of our equipment is along the edge of the property line, and there is also a, what they're proposing to us is an exchange of one acre of property adjoining our property. And I think Mr. Pope has a lot of the details on this particular easement, but our board has approved it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd point out that as of this moment, this property is encumbered by a mortgage. However, in trying to explore what our options were, one option was to try to get it released from that mortgage. That was a pretty cumbersome, time-consuming, and expensive process, and we learned and realized that the refinance transaction we're doing is going to close tomorrow morning, and this property will be free from that mortgage as of that time. So we would be requesting that you approve this transaction, subject to that refinance closing tomorrow and the mortgage being released.
Any questions, Dr. Miller or Mr. Pope? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve, with the stipulations included.
Okay. Motion to approve comes from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to turn the next two items, C and D, over to David Salibi. These are both requests for new rescue districts.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, board commissioners. Tonight, we have your next two agenda items. We have two volunteer fire departments, Lake Norman and Shepherds, both in the southern district. It was included in your board packet, a map. Both of these fire departments are currently a medium level of rescue. Both of these fire departments are requesting rescue districts to be formed, which is required by the board of commissioners to form these rescue districts. These districts will coincide with the current fire district lines for each one of those Each one of these departments have completed or fulfilled the requirements by the county to form a rescue districts. They were also in your board packet, mutual aid agreements with a higher level of rescue. And Lake Norman has a mutual aid agreement, which was in your packet, with the town of Mooresville, which is heavy rescue and specialized. Lake Norman's currently medium. Shepherds Fire Department is also currently medium. They have a mutual aid agreement with Mooresville, who is, as I said, heavy, and they also heavy rescue, and they also have a mutual aid agreement with the Troutman Fire and Rescue, which is also heavy rescue. Each one have, they have submitted to you a ECOM or a communications protocol on how to be dispatched. This dispatch has not been turned over to our communications group yet. When it does, as it's rolled in, it will be subject to some clarification by ECOM, and they will have a little bit of work to do with the districts to make sure that the correct procedures are in place after reviewing that. In your board packet, there was verifications, which was also required, verifications of their certification, verifications of mutual aid certifications, and there was a special, a letter of any special funding that would be requested by them, also included in your packet. We have representatives from both. From Lake Norman, we have their chief, Andy Weatherman, and Kevin Clark, assistant chief from Shepherds. We have Chief Kelly Robinson, assistant chief Jamie Behringer, and they are here to answer any questions. Is there any questions from you at this time?
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Salibi or these gentlemen from Lake Norman?
I have a question. There have been meetings about this going on, and is it your understanding that all the groups represented at these meetings are aware of the direction that the county is heading as far as rescue?
Yes.
And rescue districts?
Yes. There have been, there's been an emergency services team meeting for the southern end of the county, and that team was comprised of the four volunteer fire departments, Mooresville Fire Department, Mooresville Rescue, and Iredell County EMS. And they've all been part of these meetings. They're ongoing. There's just a little bit left to do as far as any possible funding in the future, and maybe some EMS services in that area. But other than that, they pretty well worked through the process. But we, the county has facilitated that team, but the team was mostly led by them, and decisions were made by a group of all representatives.
And your understanding that all the members representative, represented was aware of this direction, that we were all moving?
Yes.
I understand.
Yes, as I understand it, yes. All the members of the team, that's correct, that represented each department.
Any other questions?
Didn't have so much of a question as maybe a statement and a wish. You know, a lot of times what makes government inefficient is, as opposed to private industry, is private industry is primarily focused on maximizing efficiency and doing stuff for the lowest cost, highest degree of service, that type of stuff. And in government, we do have to be concerned about fairness, and sometimes whenever we err on the consideration of fairness, sometimes we lose some of our efficiency. And we clearly are going through a transition in the southern end of the county where the way we used to do things based upon the previous demographics is changing. And anytime, anytime in nature there's change, there's always, it seems to be, there's typically usually some pain, and also there are some inefficiencies until everything kind of, until everything balances out. So I don't have any, I don't have any preconceptions that this is going to be without pain or without future adjustment. I would ask, though, is both of these requests asked? I would ask though, is, um, is, uh, both of these requests asked for the money to follow the service, and we understand that. Um, but when the town of Mooresville made their request initially, they, they worked with us, they, they didn't hold it tied to the money, at, at least initially, if I recall correctly. So in, until some of our response, roles and responsibilities are, are settled out, I'm going to, um, I don't think we need to modify a, a motion or whatever, other than grant, if we want to grant the request that they have a new district, but give us some flexibility as, as this transition begins to occur to deal with some of the obligations that we've got with our rescue services and, um, and, and maybe that can help us, you know, a- a- as we define what everybody's roles will be in the future. So I'm just asking for some flexibl- you know, when I say I'm asking, I'm, I'm saying we're going to need some flexibility as we move forward, and I'm not talking about between now and next July, I'm talking about, you know, two thou- the budget year 2000, um, 2014 and 2015, we're going to, we're going to need some flexibility. This, this is definitely, um, the, the trend in the southern end, it's, uh, like I said, it's, it, I'm not against it happening. I mean, I think in the end, we're going to have more, more trained, certified, uh, volunteer firemen and rescue personnel available to serve the citizens via the, the fire service and, uh, and, and, you know, sometimes the public has asked us about some of the redundancies of our system. They go, you know, we certainly have a lot of people responding. Now, of course, the people who are in the car that's wrecked, they never ask that question. They're happy. In fact, they, they'd be happy if we sent two more, you know? But, um, so, so this is ju- I think this is, this is just a trend, and I don't think that we've seen the end of it. Um, so with those concerns and with that consideration, um, you know, I, I could support the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Salibi, do you see that this is an inevitable direction that the southern end of the county is moving towards? I mean, it's because of the, just the shift in population and, and the way that things have grown, do you see this as just the natural result of changes in the area, that we have to look at doing this a little different?
Yes, the southern end of the county has, has grown quite a bit, and, uh, and it's nothing like the middle or the northern end. It's, it, it has a personality, uh, of its own, and, and this appears to be the way that it's moving, uh, with or without, with or without some formal team of looking at, looking at it. It appears to be moving in that direction, and it was done with Mortal in, in, uh, the spring of 2011. It was granted, and it just seems the na- the natural progression only for the southern end at this time.
Do you think it will provide better service to the citizens?
Yes, yes. Uh, you know, we, we showed the map of, of where rescue squads were located at the ball, at the winter retreat, and then we overlaid that with the map of fire departments and how many more there were. Uh, re- rescue squads do a great job throughout the entire county, uh, but it, but it appears with the, with the number of fire departments, they can respond quicker, uh, at least be there first. Uh, and there's still need for rescue squads in, in Iredale County, uh, to handle the, the larger events, yes.
You know, Mr. Salibi, as I sit here and, and think about these things, and when you sit in one of these chairs for a number of years, you, you begin to develop personal relationship with people, and you, you, you gain a great deal of admiration for people to have dedicated their lives to this kind of service with no monetary reward whatsoever. They, they just did it because they're good people. And you gain such an admiration from them, it, it makes decisions like these even more difficult, but... There comes a time when you, you're asked to be a good steward, and you got to set personal feelings aside, and that's difficult to do. Uh, the demographics have driven this process. In the north end of the county, you may respond to a call, and the, the problem a lot of time is distance. In the south end of county, you can have a lot shorter distance, but it'll take you longer to get there. You can't go east, west, and any direction in the south end of the county from Mooresville without driving through several neighborhoods and two or three different business districts at least. So this is what's driven this process, and it's a little bit, it's a little bit painful for all of us to do, but sooner or later, you know, if you're going to be a good steward of the assets you have, and you're going to provide the best service to the people that you serve, and you're going to do it at least cost, you got to do some things that, uh, a lot of times make you uncomfortable with some of the relationships you've established, but it's incumbent upon you to do that, and that's kind of where we are. I appreciate the job you've done, and I know we've tasked you with some, some difficult things to do in the last few months, and I appreciate the effort you put forth. I, I do want to say this, that anything we do is not meant to be in a spirit where we're just going to cast aside the folks at the Mooresville Rescue Squad. These are good people who served their community for ye- years. And I'm going to ask the gentlemen and ladies here who represent these fire departments tonight, take a message back to their folks that if anyone from the Mooresville Rescue Squad desires to continue in emergency services in this county and approach you with a willingness to serve in your fire department in the area of rescue, I would ask you to respect that request and grant it to them. Unless you can think of any matter of moral turpitude or whatever that's, uh, definable and provable, I would ask you to take them in. I'd respect for the service they've done to their communities. And, uh, I, I think they will. I would ask them to, and I would, uh, I would ask the folks in the rescue squad to avail themselves of that opportunity. These, these folks in private had expressed the willingness to work with them and, and do that, make a place for them, make them feel welcome, and continue to provide them with the, in their personal lives, what's been the calling of their lives, and then let them continue to see the blessing of serving others. With that, I'd offer a motion that we go ahead and grant this request.
Can you just ma- make one other comment? Just step back a, a bit. You know, um, Chairman Johnson always quotes one of our founding fathers or somebody that wrote the Constitution. I, I'm going to quote a character from a movie. Uh, in, in, in the movie The Replacements, Gene, Gene Hackman plays a coach, and, um, and one of the things that he, that he says to the players is, "When the game is on the line, a winner always wants the ball." And, and really, kind of what, what, what's kind of painful here is, um, you know, we have multiple entities down in the southern end of the county that when the game is on the line, which is somebody's hurt or s- something bad has happened, we've got multiple organizations that want the ball, and they're volunteer organizations to boot. I think that, that says, that speaks volumes as to the character and the character, um, of these people, and, um, just our, our hats off to them. Un- unfortunately, uh, everybody doesn't get the ball, so.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. For both of them?
All right.
Do we pass both?
Yeah.
Yeah. Opposed?
Yeah.
Great both districts.
Item E is a request for, for the appointment of two citizens to the Firefighters Relief Fund Board of Trustees, and Susan Blum and I will make that for sudden presentation.
Thank you. Each year I bring you a list of trustees of, um, for the Firefighters Relief Fund that have been recommended by each of the volunteer fire departments in the area. Um, there were no changes from last year, and I would request that you approve the trustees as submitted.
Okay. Any questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item F is a request for approval of an EMS physical agility policy with an effective date of October 1st, 2014, and David Klor and Sandra Gregory are both here to make that presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Klor.
Good evening. How are y'all this afternoon?
Fine.
I think as y'all know, we've been working on a physical agility policy for a few years now. We've run into multiple hurdles with the ADA and our, um, legal side of it to make sure we can develop a policy that's fair and uniformed and defendable. Uh, I think this policy outlines that, and it's just, do to be clear on this, this policy does not say that if we implement this, that we will not have any more injuries in EMS because EMS is a difficult job, and the potential for injury is always there on every call. But acceptance of this policy may help reduce those injuries and also reduce the lost work time associated with it during the recovery process. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Klor?
Um, I have two.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and one is probably a little bit geared towards, is Sandra in here?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right here.
Um, and Mr. Pope, and that is, uh, a, um, a prospective employee will have to take the test prior to being hired, correct?
Yes.
Um, if, you know, if Joe's, Joe Blow from the street comes and he goes, "Okay, I want to, I want this position," fills out the application, y'all say, "We're going to give you the test." Joe Blow's taking the test, you know, and, and blows a valve in his heart. Are we liable?
No.
He's not a county employee, he's just an applicant.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. And the next one is, will ES, EMS management who, who does, who supervises and, and does this, will they also have to pass the test?
That's one of the hurdles we were trying to get over. The field supervisors, yes, we can mandate anybody that has direct pre-hospital care. Now, we are going to encourage all administrative staff, including myself, to also partake in this, but we cannot mandate them by our legal advice because it's not a direct job requirement.
Current employees have to pass the test?
Yes.
What happens if they don't?
Well, that, we're, that's why we're postponing the date, actually effective date, till 10, 10-1 of 2014, to give them time to prepare and see where they're at. Uh, and that was one of the things we had to go across too, was the ability to meet the standard, give them time to be able to come up and meet the standard. We're going to offer several of these tests throughout this year to see where people can see where they're at and what they need to work on. If they fail to meet the test, they will be put with our wellness coordinator, and then she'll develop a plan with them to work on physical agility in some different time, then they'll be given a chance to retest at that point.
Can I add to that? And if they continue to not pass that test, it will be handled as standard work performance, so it would go through the disciplinary progressive, progressive discipline process if they could not pass the test.
Do you anticipate that all or most of the employees will be able to pass this test, or do you anticipate there'd be some significant number that would not?
I, to that, I don't know. The average was done based on the employ- a group of employees that are already working here now is where the timeframe came from. Uh, I would say there will be some that will probably fail if they do not put an effort into it. That's why we're doing a lot of preemptive telling them, "Here it is, we're going to get set up the courses and actually put them through and work with them to get those standards established."
How do these compare with national standards?
There is no national standard.
Really?
The only emergency services field there is no standard in.
Any state standard?
Oh, we're one of the few that are actually, actually pursuing anything in that area.
Well, good for you. That's good.
I, I know Iredale County is not in the Army, but in the Ar- in the Army, it was lead by example.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when I was, you know, a forty-five or however, I'm trying to think how old I was at the time, you know, forty-four, forty-five-year-old Colonel, uh, when my troops ran, I ran. When, uh, when they, when they, uh, packed all their gear on and, and strapped on their black Cadillacs and, and, uh, and walked twelve miles, I did it with them. And, uh, so when it's, uh, when it's time to go through the, the field test, can't say that I'll pass, but if I need to go out there and, and show them that, that we're not taking this lightly, I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer, okay?
You're all more than welcome to come.
I'll, I'll do it too, okay? Just to show that's how important it is, and, uh, I think it's that important for the leaders as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We, we designate Ken Robertson as the, as the, uh, representative for the Board of Commissioners.
Well, I was going to say, the pay's not real good, and the privileges are few. I'm exercising a privilege. I will not be there.
You can come watch.
I go to the county commissioner meetings at the state, you can do the agility test.
All right. I'll do it with them.
Any further discussion, questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the, uh, motion that we approve this policy as written.
Okay. Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask that? Mr. Pope, if a commissioner is, dot, blows out a valve in this competition, is he covered by?
Uh, no, I don't think workers' comp cover that.
Just don't do it in your running shorts, please.
Item G is a request from Nancy Keith.
Okay. Good evening. Um, we in Cooperative Extension would just come to request permission from you to apply for a $10,000 grant through the Easton Foundation for the Iredale County 4-H Shooting Sports Team, and that would be in archery.
Any questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll call this project Wolf Pack.
Item H.
Oh, she names it afterwards.
Yeah. Item H is a request from ICATS, Ben Stikelether.
Board, the, uh, agenda item you have before you is to request to add a position to our current fiscal year budget, Processing Assistant III. Attached with it is a budget amendment that shows the, uh, extra revenue coming in. The extra revenue comes from the town of Mooresville, a contract that we have with them to provide services, and Mitchell Community College. I didn't budget those revenues whenever we went through the budget process because that had to go through their procedures, and it wasn't final, so I decided to hold off on that. We currently have, have someone performing these duties in a temporary role because of, um, of some personnel issues at ICATS. The emails that are attached with the memo go to speak to the customer service improvement that has occurred because of that. ICATS, as you know, is in a little different situation. We bring in all of our own revenue, part of running a good business model is to provide cu- good customer service. We've really improved that by adding this position, um, by continuing and funding this position that will continue. When I took the role of Transportation Administrator, the number one complaint was the lack of answered phone calls. I addressed that through a temporary fix, and now it's time to make a permanent one. We definitely recognize the fact that, um, funding changes from year to year. If funding shifts and revenues go down, we will, um, assess it accordingly and make changes in personnel if we have to, so. Be more than happy to answer any questions about the position.
Any questions, Mr. Stikelether? Not? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment number five.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment number five for ICATS. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item E is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of budget amendment number six, and Ricky Eads will make that request.
Good afternoon. Uh, we're asking for consent to approve budget amendment to accept the 2013 Justice Assistance Grant. Uh, this year the grant amount is $15,105. The fund will be used, or the funding will be used to purchase equipment for the Athletic League and to purchase instructional equipment for the Training Academy. There is no match for this grant.
Okay. Any que- Any questions, and Ms. Reed? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item J is a request from the State Employees Credit Union. This is similar to the one we heard a couple of weeks ago. This would be for a new ATM down at the Government Center South. It would be for a four-year lease agreement, and the amount the county would receive is $100 per year, and all of the utilities, including electricity, will be covered by state employees. And I'd be glad to try and answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Smith? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the agreement.
We have a motion to approve this agreement from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item K is a request for approval of the August 2013 tax refunds and releases, and these are in order, and I request your approval.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And L is a request for approval of the September 3rd, 2013 minutes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements. Did I miss something? Okay, no, excuse me. Announcements to vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Nursing Home Advisory Committee, two announcements. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. The Local Emergency Planning Committee, we have three announcements. Now we come to appointments to the boards and commissions. The Recreation Advisory Committee. And if it pleases the board, I would nominate Ms. Melissa Jablonsky. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations important. Melissa Jablonsky by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention this evening? Public comment period? We have one. Mr. Dusenberry.
Commissioner Brett Dusenberry, Town of Mooresville. I'm also a commissioner. I just, I've been sitting in the back listening to y'all this evening, and I just thought somebody ought to say thank you as a citizen and as a fellow legislator. Some of the particulars didn't come out about the approvals of the new industry improvements down there. A lot of people don't know that we created, we will be creating 157 new full-time jobs, 27 part-time jobs, and the lowest wage on all of those jobs was $18 an hour. And some, one of the companies has an average of $65,000 for all their employees. So we are bringing good advanced manufacturing jobs to the citizens, which will in turn create other tax revenue, quality of life. But I just wanted to say thank you to y'all. And also, we're dealing with the same public safety vision that y'all are as well, and it is very sensitive, very painful, but I think everybody keeps their sight on that ball of providing public safety as, first of all, saving lives, and second of all, property. But we are experiencing tremendous growth down there, and considering the economy we're dealing with, we can't-- we have to look at things in reality and deal with them as they are. But I appreciate your ability to look at the needs for the citizens of not only South Aridale County, Mooresville, and the entire county, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dusenberry. I appreciate the cooperation with the Town of Mooresville and helping bring these jobs, and certainly your personal effort very much. I'd like to offer you just one thing I read today, was talking about the future of manufacturing and where the jobs may go, and the title of the article is "How China Has Lost Its Mojo." As a result of their one child per family policy, between now and 2030, there will be 67 million fewer workers in China than there is today. That's the population of France. They're gonna have a labor shortage over there. It's already start-- they're already starting to feel it, because the workers, there's a labor shortage, and it's already started bidding up the price of labor, to where now, if you include the price of labor and transportation costs, the gap between the cost to deliver products to market is narrowing ever more, and they say there's gonna be a lot of opportunities in the future as a result of that policy. It's just something I read.
I just wanted to add one more thing, Commissioner Johnson. Because of your stewardship with our tax rate and our tax dollars, there are unfortunately several counties around here tonight that are reaching for tissues, because their industry or operations come in Aridale County. And people should understand, that's because of your leadership. And I'm not trying to be negative against those other counties, but we, you know, we do a good job here, and that's, I'm sure you all subscribe to economic theory, and that's what brings the jobs, is low taxes, a good workforce, good schools, and it's all attributed to y'all and our board and the citizens of Aridale County. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Any new business?
I would like to mention one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Back during the budget deliberations, I was critical of the Aridale State School for sending out emails on the, you know, official, the official email list, encouraging people to lobby in favor or against certain legislation. I didn't think that public resources should be used for that purpose. At that time, the school superintendent and chairman of the school board defended that action. Just read an article in the Charlotte Observer today. Central Piedmont Community College forwarded an email from a group supporting a bond issue in Becklinburg County. One of the county commissioners there, Bill James, criticized that, and there was a little bit different reaction there. The spokesman for Central Piedmont Community College, Jeff Lawrence, said the commissioners were right. He's called forwarding the email an oversight on our part, and said, quote, "We won't forward any other vote yes messages moving forward," end of quote. So, you know, Central Piedmont Community College understands you shouldn't use public resources for lobbying purposes, and I think that kind of indicates my position on that issue. Now, I realize that one time it was lobbying for legislation, another time lobbying for bond issue, but it was still, you know, use of public resources for lobbying, so I just thought I would mention that.
Thanks, sir. Any other new business? County managers report?
Don't really have a report. Just want to remind you that we're looking at November 8th as a, as the date for our board work session. Looking at, it's on Friday, and looking at holding it at Little Joe's in, at the Berium Springs campus. And if there are any, you know, issues that you want to make sure are included on the agenda, please let me know.
I'm not aware of any closed session this evening, so I'll offer a motion we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?